All right, we're going to open the regular meeting of the Citrus County School Board on May 12th, 2020. Opening exercise by Mrs. Bryant. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to say congratulations to the class of 2020. I think you need to know that we, the school board, every one of us, all very proud of you. You have the whole world at your feet. And there's nothing you can't do or achieve. Go Citrus County.
Woo-hoo!
Let's stand and say a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on individual liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to adopt the agenda as recommended by Superintendent Hemmle. Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Powers to, second by Mr. Kennedy, to adopt the agenda as recommended by Superintendent Hemmle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Citizens comments. Citizens comments reserve for comments on the items requesting approval on the agenda or subject. Mr. Bradshaw is checking for green cards or any...
No green cards.
I still have to say two more times?
No, ma'am. That's only at the public hearing.
Okay, well, that's citizens' comments. And we need the approval of the consent agenda.
No approval?
Second.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Mrs. Bryant, second by Mr. Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We have recognition of donations and we have, I had two, and we'd like to bring those into record. We have a donation of upholstery in the weightlifting room at Citrus High School valued at $1,575. We also have a donation of $50,000 to MacCuchy Technical from Rita M. Olson to help deserving students with financial obligations associated with their enrollment at MacCuchy Technical College. Okay? All right, those are our donations. Educational services? We're operating, of course, under a...
They'll be right here.
We're limited attendance in our boardroom, so we have people waiting outside and they're coming in. So Dr. Hebert will be here shortly, and he's going to give us an educational services update.
You could do the instructional support recommendations while you're waiting.
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
All right.
I don't mind if we have, can I make a motion that we accept the instructional support recommendations for item eight A?
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mrs. Bryant, to adopt the Golden Rod for personnel information, personnel information as submitted by Superintendent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or the rod passes?
I have a question on that. My board says drop extension. How long is the extension?
Usually it's just one year. And then every year you have to ask one again.
And that's up to three years? Up to three.
Beyond the five for teachers, other administrators are supported.
Okay.
And I've got a question in regards to the retirement celebrations that we've had initiated in years. What's an inch of...
I have a question. On what we're doing. We're hoping to see how things progress between now and there as far as the phases.
How are you doing?
Good. How are you doing?
Good. Nice to see you.
All right. Dr. Hebert, updating on educational services.
So I'm here to update you on kind of where we are in the education world in Citrus County. So first, I'll let you know that, you know, Mrs. Hemmle's been very aggressive in having our team, one, as you know, develop the remote learning plan that we've been working on. Once we got that up and rolling, she came to me and said, "Dr. Hebert, we need to work on, how are we gonna, what are we gonna do when we come back? What's next steps? How are we gonna support our kids when we come back?" So we have been working on a framework that I would like to share with you on what we call the Citrus County Education Recovery Framework. We're still working on a name for it. We don't have, like we call Citrus Cares Plan, we're working on a name, but we haven't developed that yet, but we've got some options. So first of all, as we think about recovering with our students, the piece that I know we will follow is whatever the CDC guidelines are and whatever the governor's recommendations are for reopening of schools. So at this point, you know, where we are, we're where we are today. We don't know what August will look like, and as I spoke into Mrs. Hemmle, we have to, you know, think about her, her plan would be, everybody would be back full force in the school system. But we don't know that. So my focus today is to share with you where we are with the education component of our plan and what we're looking at. So as we began to think about it, I wanted to share three things, three statements to think about, is one, we're planning for change because we know things are probably not going to be the way we were used to them being. So we need to plan for that change. We need to think about innovation in our work, so how we're being innovative in the work we do with our students, and we need to reimagine the instruction because instruction will look different than it has been. So those are kind of the three key components. First of all, as we think about our summer programs, our team met in January when we first started, we came up with, what are we gonna do for summer school? Now, this is before any of these things had happened. We came up with a summer plan, here's how summer learning's gonna look, our extended school year for our third grade students, our second grade students, all the students in the district. So we had that already in place. So we met yesterday with our team to say, okay, in lieu of the situation we're in now, what might summer look like? So we came up with three, three possible options for the summer that are still on the table, but we have to make a decision here in the next week. I've spoken to Mrs. Hemmle and said, within the next week, decisions have to be made because when you think about summer school, it's more than just providing the instruction, it's providing buses, it's providing good service, it's getting the teachers on board, and all of those things have had to happen within a school setting. So option A, we came up with, was to implement the current plan as is. So we're allowed to open up, kids can come back to school, we would just implement exactly what we already have in place. The piece that we're adding, that we want to add no matter what, is we want to offer online resources for our at-risk students in elementary, in middle, and high. We've already spoken to the principals, Mrs. Taylor's taking care of our elementary, Mrs. Voight-Behler, our little school, Miss Stanley, our high school, to identify students that we think would need additional supports over the summer. With that being said, we would offer students the opportunity to keep their iPads if they have those, or if they don't have iPads and want paper packets, we'd provide whatever that instructional pieces would be, just to give them that extra boost for the summer. So we're doing that regardless. That is a new piece we've never done before, and we want to do that this summer because of the situation we're in. Option B would be to do a blended model of face-to-face and online, looking specifically at third grade because we know that's a critical grade level for instruction, and our ESE students. So those would be, if you did a blended model, we'd have, most of our summer programs would be online, and then those third grade and ESE would be face-to-face. Yes, ma'am?
If we go back to what we were talking about before, what teachers would be in charge of the work the children are doing in the summer school online?
Ms. Taylor, would you like to speak to, as we've talked about that online?
Good afternoon. We have already generated a list of possible summer school teachers. They are able to submit their interest in March, so we have that list, so what we'll do is revisit that list, we're gonna start looking at it next week, and then we'll be deciding which teachers, oh, thank you. Which teachers would be available and who would be interested in that online piece. For elementary, we have the iReady piece that we have in place, and then, of course, in the secondary world, we have the Achieve 3000 we would utilize, and Edgenuity as a great recovery piece.
And you have one teacher taking care of all the visual, depending on how many.
Exactly. We'll, we'll look at our number of students, and then we'll look at our student-teacher ratio, and we'll be able to service more students online.
But the vote that we took today on the consent agenda was to approve summer instructional personnel, so that's gonna be people on that list that we've already approved.
Yes.
Okay. And so I know when I talked to Dr. Hebert, I mean, there's already been contact with him that, hey, this is very well, could be the way it's going.
Well, all we've done this far is just approve them, so now we will develop a plan, we will solidify that plan. If we totally go virtual, then we'll reach out to those teachers and we'll let them know.
And, and we might totally be virtual depending on what happens.
Yes. This is a process we follow every school year. If a teacher's interested in teaching summer school, they submit their name, and then we look at that list once it's approved by the board, and we create classes depending on the interest and the numbers of students. And also, some teachers are only interested in subbing, and so they'll submit their name just so their school board approved, and then they can get paid if they just wanna sub during summer school. So we'll work through all those pieces as we decide which option we follow.
When they apply, they were, we were in the traditional format, so there may be some teachers on that list that don't wanna do an online format.
Right.
But typically, there's twice as many names on that list as what we need.
We always have more than enough.
Go through it that way.
Ms. Taylor, I think you mentioned iReady, Achieve 3000, and Edg...
Edgenuity.
Edgenuity. All of those would be remediation and products that we would use to narrow the achievement gaps with students already. Would, would those have probably been products we would've used anyway this summer to some extent?
Yes.
So really, we're, we're largely having the same curriculum, really potentially with the same instructors or many of the same instructors, it just may be the place where they're doing that learning may be different.
Exactly.
And they use all those programs during the school year.
Yes.
Very familiar.
So it's really an expansion. And then the third, the third model that we shared with the team was that all programs would be implemented in an online format, so we have no face-to-face instruction. So, you know, the first plan is face-to-face, which is what we currently do with the online being for those students, elementary, middle, and high. Second one is the blended model of face-to-face and online, and then the third model is completely 100% online format. So we'll have to make a decision here in the near future. I know I've spoken with Mrs. Hemmle, the executive team, and that decision, we hope, will be forthcoming here in the future as we know more information.
Dr. Hebert, you talked about face-to-face, but I don't think, am, am I assuming that would be with some modified social distancing?
It would be, as I said at the beginning, and the whole thing I'm talking about today is whatever the CDC guidelines are, and I know Mr. Baumer is our expert in that area, we would follow his guidelines and the governor's guidance on what those reopening of schools would be. So depending on those, if that information were to be forthcoming in the next week or so, that we're able to do that, we would look at those guidelines and we'd implement those within the school, on the bus, and all those places that need to happen.
Because it appears that the information is even through Phase Four, potential with the state, we're through, we're still in a social distancing situation, so the high likelihood would be that we're in social distancing. If we did have face-to-face instruction, would that be an opportunity for, you know, the school system to be able to maybe almost test or pilot some of what we could be addressing and dealing with during the fall?
I mean, I would think that would give us those opportunities to definitely explore that, if we were to do that, yes.
I've, I've got a question on the blended. So I, I'm very clear on the first ones and the third one, I think we need to have a couple blended options, though, not just one blended option, because obviously, there could be a couple that this board can make a decision on as far as what would be the best way to have a blended model, whether it's allowing students to be totally online but in our online academy. I guess that's still, would that still be a blended model?
Well, we, you know, currently, like, I wouldn't consider what we're doing an online academy. I think what we're doing right now is what we call remote learning. So the next part of the piece, which is what I'm talking about for next school year, we'll talk about, there's an online piece that I and Mrs. Taylor's kind of leading the charge on that, which would be like a virtual school. So that wouldn't be something we'd be ready to start this summer. That is not, we're not, I can tell you, we're not ready for that. It would really be an extension of what we're currently doing now throughout the summer. So providing students opportunities for curriculum support in the summer, working on some of those resources we talked about, and probably in our core content areas.
Okay. So, and I, I think we're, the next is gonna be what it looks like in the next...
I'm, I'm gonna talk about the framework that we've kind of, our committee's working on, so I'm gonna share what I have for beginning the school year as we think about August, coming back in August.
Okay. So...
And what, what, sorry?
No, no, go ahead.
What about the students that don't need extra help, or do you know, what's advanced for them, say the advanced students? Gifted?
They, they would still be able to participate on those programs if they want. You know, we're looking at, if students wanna keep their devices for the summer, we've been talking about allowing them the opportunity to do that, and many of our programs offer students to go. I know with the iReady program, Mrs. Taylor can attest to that, they offer students to go advanced and do advanced work if they want to. So we, we could definitely, those would be things we would explore if the students wanna do that. But I, I will tell you, from what I've heard out on the street a little bit, is that students are ready for summer.
Parents are ready for summer.
Continue with the learning, you know, unless it's a need, so we'll see. So let me, as we talk about the 2021 school year, and understand, I'm talking about the academic piece. I know there's a piece that we have to consider, which I know Mr. Kennedy brought up about the schools, and Mr. Bishop is certainly available to come and speak regarding those pieces. I'm talking academic piece.
You, you also talked about summer, but we have a ton of summer programs that I don't think, I don't think I understood anything about what we're doing with camps. Ms., Ms. Powers was mentioning gifted, so I know we have typically a reach program, all of those, I'm, I'm assuming we're, we're in suspended mode.
Those are all in suspended mode, and, and, you know, I know we spoke with, regarding, you said the gifted camp and the salsa camp. I spoke to Mr. Brown and Mrs. Runyon, both who had those two programs, and they, if they cannot do face-to-face, they probably would have to forego and cancel those because they said, I mean, at this point, they'd be collecting, I know even the salsa camp, they haven't even started collecting forms, they, they would've already had that information. So they're really behind the eight ball to get all that in, get the resources, and be able to move forward. And we're, today is May 12th, right?
And that makes sense as far as the face-to-face or not face-to-face, but, but I think we're in a world now where face-to-face, social distancing is not the same as what their face-to-face was. So does that mean we would consider doing those in a face-to-face but through social distancing?
I would say those probably would be canceled. The, the ones, when I think about our face-to-face, and, and we really selected the students that we felt would need the most would be our grade-three students, because those are our critical students, you look at the research on students learning to read at grade three, and our ESE students would be the ones...
No, I apologize, the camps. You mentioned the camps. You said if they, if they aren't face-to-face, they probably...
If we can't, if we can't come face-to-face with students, we're not coming face-to-face in camps either. That's, so, the only way we would allow camps to take place is if we were also going face-to-face with students. So if we can't do that, we can't do either. And Ms. Hemmle is trying to hold off as long as she can to make a prudent decision, but that, that final decision will probably be presented early next week. She just wants to see how, that we progressed through this week, where the governor's at as far as the phases, and then they'll make, because we're getting to that point where if we're going to do it, we need to go start collecting and signing up. So that, that point is becoming critical, and that'll be probably early next week when the decision, final decision is made.
And, and that's why my only question on it is, we may be permitted to do face-to-face, but that also may look, just because we can do it, doesn't mean that we're ready to do it.
Won't be like it was a year ago.
And that's what I was just gonna say.
There won't be sixty kids in the gym with one coach.
And that's why, I guess what I'm saying is, is I, I think it's proven that if staff says, "We could do it, but we have concerns about doing it," then I, I can respect that. If you also say, "We can do it, but we're gonna have to maybe, you know, either look at sizing differently, or locations, or something," I can understand that, too. I just wasn't sure what role those were playing in those, that decisions.
Oh, yes. Our final decision will be based on what we have. Right now, if we, if we were able to do a face-to-face, it would be modified, and it would not look like it's looked in the past. It would be very different. But we will not know even if we are able to do that until early next week, and the superintendent's gonna make a final decision, and we're gonna go through the summer with that. We're just, at some point, we don't have time to continue to plan and put things off. So staff needs to be, bus routes need to be drawn up, meal plans need to be developed, lesson plans, so at some point, we have to give our staff time to do that.
And, and that's exactly what I was gonna say.
So we're, we're getting close to that point, and that'll probably early next week.
So even like Coastal Camp Citrus, the, any, or we're talking about all camps?
Coastal Camp, Citrus, Marine Science Station Camp, we talked about whether we could do that as a day camp instead of an overnight camp. There's a lot of different options we've tossed back and forth. I'll be honest, it's, it doesn't, there's a slim, if at all, chance left that that's going to be open, but we'll, we'll make that final announcement next week. But it just doesn't look good for things like that unless there were, you know, they may come up with a vaccine on Saturday, I don't know. But early next week, superintendent's going to make a final decision based on recommendations from the staff on all of those, and we'll, we'll release that.
And Mr. Mullin, am I correct to say that camps versus instructional? Instructional is much more controlled because you can largely put desks, you can control the, you know, where, you know, breaks and so forth. With camps, it's very hands-on, it's very close proximity, which I say that in case staff is struggling with that decision. Am I correct that, that that's what makes that more challenging than just saying, "We might be able to provide that face-to-face instruction," as Dr. Hebert's talking about?
The Camp at Marine Science Station.
Right.
You know, it's, value in that camp is taking the kids out on the boat. You can't social distance on that boat unless we're gonna take six kids out at a time.
Right.
So there's a lot of things that just make it logistically impossible. Even if the restrictions become less stringent, it makes it, it's still, there's still going to be some type of social distancing involved, and some of that becomes problematic if we continue to try to have those programs, you know? And you don't wanna run a program if you can't run it right.
Agreed.
And one thing I think we need to remember as board members is that we work in a Citrus County school system that has always, at least as long as I've been here, which is like 25 years, err on the side of good judgment. We just, we just don't do anything that would put our kids in jeopardy, so we, we trust the staff.
There's a lot of things that go on in the summer, and Mr., Dr. Hebert just submitted a form to the state, you know, a lot of things we don't think about until we look at it all at one time.
Yeah.
You got your VPK, you have your summer school, we have our, Crest runs a program, we run a program at the high school, we run boot camps for, so there's a lot of different things that go on in the summer. It's not just third grade, there's a lot of programs we have to consider.
So as we begin to think about the 2021 school year, and again, I'm gonna reiterate, I'm looking at the academic piece of this. I know I spoke to Mr. Bishop, and he's, you know, well-versed in being able to talk about the facility side of the house, but as far as the academic piece, first of all, we want to think about the social-emotional support we need to provide our students. You know, they've been working from home, working remotely, so as they return, we have to think about those supports we have to put in place. So we've talked about school-based teams, developing some processes and protocols that they'll be able to do as students are coming in. We want to provide district-wide social-emotional learning support lessons, that'll be provided district-wide K-12. We talked about a student well-check, so when a student returns, we want to do some kind of a well-check on that student to see how they're doing. And not a well-check as you think about, you know, a medical well-check, this is more about how are you doing emotionally, like a social-emotional well-check, having some conversation with them and finding out. So we're working on some protocols that we would do for those as well. We're looking at providing PB for staff, professional development for staff, on implementing some of this and identifying that, and then again, working with our, our providers outside the school system to provide wraparound services. Because that, to me, when I think about the, the whole child, is that social-emotional piece, we have to get that in place first because there will be some anxiety as students return, as families return, so we need to make sure that we address that.
Are you gonna access groups outside the school system?
Yes, yes. We have, we've already, Ms. Humble and Ms. Greco have been working with the other outside agencies to contact them so they can be available for support of our students, so we want to do that. So we're also looking academically for various program models that we can use to support and bolster our curriculum as the kids return, because as we know, there probably will be some gaps that students have had. You know, if you've read anything on the COVID slide that they're talking about, we have to be able to address those. So we're looking at before and after-school tutoring, we're looking at some intervention models that we want to put in place at all the schools, remediation of skills, and we're looking at how we can schedule throughout the day. So it could be students having, at the secondary level, like for geometry, you might do an informal geometry coupled with a regular geometry to be able to provide that additional support at the high school level. So we've had, we've had some conversations today, I meet every week with one of our teams, and they were today, we, we went through a lot of information to continue to develop what that'll look like. We're also looking at our exceptional student education team, tracking of our IAPs, 504s, where are we, and they're monitoring that now, but as students return, we're still gonna have to address those. How do we communicate with families? What are the service plan looks like? The evaluations? I know our school psychologist, I happen to be married to one, is, right now, trying to work on how do we provide evaluations and assessments of our students face-to-face, because that's a piece of what she does. And right now, because of every, the, the place we're in, we're not able to do that, but we're working on a plan, and hopefully, we can begin to implement so they can provide those. And then your related services and therapies that we have to provide for students as well. How do we do that? Do we do it through teletherapy? Do we do it remotely? And so we're working on a plan to be able to encompass all of them. Next, we're looking at the expansion of our virtual program. We do have a virtual program in the district that we, that we utilize, but we really feel at this point, we have to expand that. So we're reviewing current providers of the online curriculum. We're gonna develop a service delivery model to meet the students' needs in multiple formats. So it could be a blended format, could be 100% online, blended, whatever we can do to meet students' needs, and then providing that personalized learning option for students. Mrs. Taylor is in the process of going through that, I don't know if you want to add anything else to that, Mrs. Taylor, with the virtual, if you want, yeah?
Emphasize, too, that this is a K-12 program we're looking at, and this would be, if we ever had a situation like what we're in currently, this would be our go-to curriculum instead of something that we're doing now. This would be our go-to curriculum for delivering our K-12.
So I am leading a committee in looking at expanding our virtual options. So we currently have a committee in place, it's comprised of about 30 members, we have stakeholders from elementary, middle, high school, Mr. Kennedy's representing the school board, we also have a parent who has an elementary, middle, and high school student on that committee. So we are researching Florida-approved virtual providers. We're gonna be looking at three specific providers, FLBS, Edgenuity, MI District Virtual. We're going to be looking at presentations, we've created a rubric based on what we feel we need for our district, with the goal being that we want to keep our students with Citrus County Schools, we want to keep our teachers with Citrus County Schools, and we want to keep our FTE, our money. So our goal is to find a provider to franchise that options, to utilize our own teachers, and purchase the content. So that's what we're working on with that piece. There is another piece that I want to explain. So that's one piece that we're looking at. We're hoping to make a decision by next Wednesday, it's a very aggressive timeline, so there's that piece. We're also looking at a learning management system that will be, once again, K-12. It's not the curriculum piece, it's the learning management system that we will utilize with, with our classrooms, with remote learning, if we ever need to do that again, we will put everything into this platform to push out to parents and students. Currently, right now, during our remote learning plan, we are using a wide variety of platforms, Google Classroom, for example, that's a learning management system. Well, some teachers are using it, some are not. Some are using ClassDojo, some are utilizing Teams. So we want to utilize one standard platform, K-12, so that if we ever need to go into the remote learning piece again, we have that piece in place as well, and all of our teachers and families will be trained on it. So two separate components, that's what we're working on.
And, Ms. Taylor, I just have to say, you have assembled a rock star team of Citrus County educators to put this together, to have to have that condensed timeline, and it's been a remarkable group of, of individuals that are looking at every aspect, focused, I think, on kids and what's best for kids. The thing that's exciting is, we know our kids... The thing that's exciting is we know our kids best. And I think what you're doing is taking the best curriculum options that are out there and marrying it with our people that know our kids. When I think about IDEA and IEPs and ESE and meeting at risk and tiered students. I just think we can do that better than anybody. And I think it's going to be best for kids. So I, I'm appreciative. What is exciting is this concerned meeting, full-time, part-time, blended, and then that God forbid situation, which you're looking at. So I mean, you've really had a lot of work to do and you've done an amazing job. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm just part of one committee. So I just wanted to kind of share the global picture of what we are planning. So once we make the decision with our learning management system and curriculum, virtual provider, we will move forward with developing those systems and what will that look like? And the blended versus virtual, full-time. Those decisions will be made in our coming, our forthcoming.
When you say curriculum, does that curriculum overstate the curriculum that the textbook and teacher has prepared for the classroom?
It would be a virtual, online curriculum that is standards-based. That if a student chose to go virtually, our teachers would teach that student using that content.
Okay. And does it mirror at all what they're doing?
That will be part of our process to look at that.
Then he wants to do that.
It's still the same standards.
Yeah.
It may be different approach or different strategies or different resources, but it's still the same standards.
Okay.
So at the end of the course, the student's doing the same standards that they're having to do whether they're at school, online, or how they're teaching. It's the same standard.
It wouldn't make the teachers do it.
No, we have, we have a rubric that we're utilizing that we developed with our committee.
We may not necessarily have the same teacher doing both formats. You may have your online teacher and you would have your in-school brickhouse teacher.
Oh.
But Ms. Kayler, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, we do pacing now guides that are at the district level. So that whether I'm at Crystal River High School or I'm at La Canto, I should be about at the same place. There's certain some autonomy, but if I ended in March at one school, I should be about in the same place. Is that looked at blending that together with this type of thing? So again, that seamlessness could, if it needed to, be there?
We will certainly be looking at that. All of these pieces will be looked at. Once we make our final decision, which will be quickly, then we'll move forward with all of those other pieces. Because they're very important.
Well, I saw the agenda and I saw the discussion of the different curriculums. So I called the Blendi right away and said, are we bringing somebody in to the system to do this? Because that is frightening. As you said, the people in the system know what to do. They know what's to be taught. We don't want someone from that.
We want to use our teachers. Right, our goals, keep our students, keep our teachers, keep our FTE.
Exactly.
Does, I've got a question. Does the virtual provider dictate the management system?
They will have a separate management system, yes. They have their own management system, the three companies we're looking at.
They don't dictate what we choose to use.
No, 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 no. They use their own, but in addition, we'll have our own learning management system for the classroom. And if we need to, God forbid, go to remote learning again for those students who are doing brick and mortar. Because right now, we have so many learning platforms to utilize.
Yeah, we've got to, we've got to get consistency.
Yes, that's what we're working on.
I don't think, I'm not complaining about where we are now. We're in this remote learning that's new to everybody. It's what we have to look at going into next school.
Yes.
And part of the problem is the multiple logins from different platforms. We need to get to one.
Yes, we're going to have one.
Right, good.
Yes.
Okay, and you know, that it is something that is consistent across the district. And I hear what Mr. Mullin says about, you know, some teachers might be a virtual school teacher, some teacher might be at the physical school teaching a class. I was a little confused. Scott, you had mentioned the, some would be teaching informal geometry and then others would have a lesson on formal geometry.
No, there's two different courses. So when the high schools talked about it today to help build those skill sets of the students getting into geometry, they could have those two classes. They do, they marry them together. So maybe in period one, they're doing the informal geometry and then period two, they're doing the regular geometry. And really, that is formal. Yes, the same student stays in the class, the same teacher. So it's like the student is having two periods of geometry to help them. And it wouldn't be for all kids. It's those students that need it. And they've actually been doing this, I know La Canto High Schools shared that they've done it this past year for some of their students that needed that additional support. And it's been very successful in helping their students. So they're looking at adding some additional sections of that for students that might need that. It wouldn't be for all students. It's those students that need that additional intervention or support. We talked about the academic piece.
So this virtual provider that we are looking at, right, is going to provide the curriculum. Is that, would you, that's the correct statement, right? And, but it will be our employees that will be teaching that curriculum. And it'll be our school, our virtual school. So obviously, there's some costs associated with this. Is there going to be an exchange on the savings side? Where's the, where's the exchange on the savings side going to be as far as this?
I'm not sure.
Well, remember, if a student chooses virtual, we lose the FTE completely.
Not if it's our school though, right?
No, 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 but with our school, then the idea would be is that they would be able to retain that. And there would just be the cost, which is usually a per pupil, per.
Yeah, I don't know if it's going to be an exact wash one way or the other. But you're, you're looking at, so let's just use round numbers. Instead of 40 students being in a brick and mortar school, I have 20 in the brick and mortar and I have 20 in the online school. I'm getting, still need FTE for 40 students. I still need two teachers, only ones at home doing online and ones at school. Now the advantage to that, the cost savings to that will come whenever we have programs like we do now. Where we have five kids wanting to take an AP chemistry class at Crystal River, five at Citrus, and five at La Canto. Now I can put 15 in one class where before I had to have three teachers that offered that across the board. So that's where you'll, some of your cost savings could come in. Again, we won't know that till we know exactly what are we dealing with? Full-time virtual, part-time, blended? I mean, it could be any one of those varieties. But our goal will be to keep it, keep the cost down so that we're not seeing any additional costs involved with it. It's just a different delivery.
And Mr. Scott, I think you're right. What you're thinking is if we bought, for lack of a better term, a textbook for this year for a student to use and there was a licensing cost. And now we're getting separately, we're buying a licensing cost for the online curriculum. I don't think there's an offset for it. I think that's, that is going to end up, that probably will be the cost of business. Because we just imagined, I think, that we'd be in the situation where we.
I mean, we've incurred costs now that we've been anticipating beginning of the year. You know, we incurred costs in buying more devices, we've incurred costs in getting a license to do the Zoom. There's additional costs that we've involved with just getting through this last four, nine weeks that we didn't, we didn't think we were going to have at the beginning of the year. So there'll be costs associated with that, as Mr. Kennedy said, with additional instructional materials. But eventually, I think that'll settle down to where we'll start getting, we'll start getting a trend or start knowing how many students want one version versus the other version. And then we can adjust our textbooks' purchase process accordingly.
Once the program is developed, though, we don't have the cost to pay to continue using the program we developed. As you said, it's developed from other sources.
Well, they're developing the course and the content, the program and how we offer it is our program.
Right.
But the course and content, we're purchasing from someone, just like we're purchasing a textbook.
And to be continued each year purchasing that?
We would, just like.
Yeah, there's always a continual cost to.
Just like instruction, it's an instructional material that we're getting. So I mean, there will be fees provided for one year, there'll be fees provided for three years. It's just part of our instructional materials.
And in some cases, it's not simply just the curriculum. It is also professional development that's included in that cost. So while it may be that it looks like it's one subscription cost, it can include a bundle of services. Both in teaching the teacher, professional development, monitoring of the student, providing management system. All of that in that one bundle cost. So the beauty of that is, is there is ongoing costs that, that some of that subscription can take some burdens off in other areas. That we, you know, that we might, it's not quite the same offset, but there is, there is some cost factors that it helps to save.
And here's the reality to look at. We don't know what's going to happen in August, none of us do. Even if everything is back to normal as we know it and the kids are allowed to come back to school, that's not to say all the parents are going to want them to come back to school.
Right, that's right.
So you have 40% of your parents decide, well, you're going to stick with online. We don't offer that. We lose that FTE. They go to Florida Virtual. They're done with us. We're trying to come up with a way to keep those Citrus County students, Citrus County students. So if we don't come up with this, we lose everything that has to do with those students. We come up with this, is there an additional cost, maybe a core cost involved? But we're keeping our students, we're keeping control of the material that they're getting, and we have more influence in that situation. Otherwise, they go off, there's other options for them. They don't have to, they don't have to show back up to the doors in August. They have other options now. We're just trying to make those other options part of Citrus County School District. I don't see the virtual part of this ever going away. I think it'll just continue to get. And we've had virtual school options for our kids. We're just saying now because of this, it's time to ramp it up and be able to handle a bigger volume. We've always had that virtual option the last couple of years. But now we're looking at having something that's bigger. And something that we can fall back on should we ever get in a situation where we have to close the doors again. Because one of the things, even if we are back to kids coming into the school, one of the things to consider, and we've talked about this this morning. Is if they have to open our schools up for a shelter, if they have to open our schools up for a shelter, that could potentially shut one of our schools down for 14 days. Even after the storm leaves. So we need to have an option then for those kids for 14 days. And what are we going to do? We can't just keep making up those days in the summer.
When I was looking at the different programs, ways they're presenting stuff, I thought, you know, there is a terrific opportunity here for those students who want to take something outside the norm. If they want to take something like a Nova Scotia, Virginia, history of Nova Scotia, they can do that. You're not going to have 100 who want to, but just one could be able to do it within the four months.
You're absolutely right. It is a benefit to students because we are able, especially high school kids, we are able to open the door. You know, we offer Spanish and French. We have, students want to take Chinese, they can take it through a virtual course. We don't offer that. We would have to hire a teacher for that and we may only have three kids one day. So there are options like you're talking about when you have a virtual school that you can offer so much more to kids.
And they're very exciting options where a child can be, can learn about a whole world out there when before did not. You had to find the teacher to teach the Chinese. Now you'll find it because you have a world of activities, you know?
I think the selection of the curriculum, the content, all of those things are really separate from how that's going to be, how that's going to look in August. We'll know more as the summer progresses into what things look like in August. We'll know that every week as things get better or every week if things get worse, we'll know what August is going to look like. Either way, this piece is a, will be a vital part of our curriculum regardless of what we look like.
Exactly.
Regardless of what we're doing in August. It'll have the ability, we'll have the ability to do both.
So when we look at this virtual program, I mean, you're pretty much set on going with a virtual program. I mean, superintendent's going to use the power and purchase that program outside of the board, which I mean, we gave the approval for that, right?
And if the board wants that to come back, there's time, we can bring it back to the board. It's not that, I mean, we have, we've asked a board member to sit on it, so we have board input on that. It's up to you. It's fine.
But what, if we're going to have that virtual school program out there and then we're going to open our schools back. And there is concern, and I'm concerned too, that we're going to lose students to other virtual school programs. So this is something we need to do. I don't, I mean, this is where we need to be, right?
Right.
But what will those schedules look like? What if the child wants to come to school at the physical school building and wants to do an online class as well? So will they have choices? If we talk about a true blended model, then maybe they'll only be at school for two periods and they'll be doing blended classes. I mean, who, you know?
We have that. We have that conversation. We feel we can definitely make that happen. And I actually, I had Dr. Connors and Mr. Simon, we had a group meeting and I asked for their input. I know they're both retired, but they've both been well administrators in our district, done a great job. So I asked for their input and both of them said, if we need to do something blending, they feel scheduling-wise, it could easily be done.
And that's good to know because, I mean, if we are going to utilize this virtual school, we want to get it out there so parents know this is an offering that we have. This is a Citrus County virtual school. And we want your child, instead of choosing another option, to look at what we have. And we may be able to, you know, there's a good opportunity for you to come to school for part of this week or however that's going to look. Look, so that's what the committee is looking at. Could it, could it look like maybe they come to school for two days and then they're, they're going to do an online, they're not in school for two days?
Well, I don't know, I don't know if we've gotten to that point yet. Because again, that would require a completely different schedule for teachers. And as we spoke earlier, we were talking about having teachers that were online and brick and mortar. But if you had two different, if you had that where you were only coming to school one or two days, then you start getting into some logistical concerns. I don't know how that would look. That would almost have to be a whole model of itself that you were doing something like that.
Okay.
That's more like what the colleges kind of do with some of their students, where they have math on Tuesdays, Thursdays.
But Mr. Mullin, I think we, some of that isn't entirely new to us. I mean, where we have students that whether it's dual enrollment or online now, they may take the first two periods and be at, you know, CF. Or they, I mean, I know in some cases, some of our, you know, high schoolers there, they're taking an online course during that period. And then they come third and fourth period and then they finish that. So we're doing, we are doing blended models. They just aren't our school always. I mean, they're either doing dual enrollment, often FLBS. Where this, I think, would be allowing us even more opportunity of it being our students, our teachers that have full coordination with our own program. Because I think now, I mean, we accommodate students in that regard now.
And that could be something that somebody wants to try where they do three days online and two days in person with the same online, using the online curriculum. I don't think we'd want to mix textbook plus the online curriculum. But again, that's, that's, that's getting into the weeds that we really haven't gotten into. That would really be something that I would think teachers would come to us with those kind of concepts and ideas. And we've been really driven by student need and student request. And it's just like everything else. We don't know what kind of English courses we're going to offer in addition to English 1, 2, 4 till we do student requests. And then the students drive what we offer. If we have students that want to take art classes, we add an extra art teacher. We have a lot of students that want to take it. Literature class, we add another block of literature. So the students drive that, with the exception of the core curriculum that they need for graduation. They drive that through student requests. So if we had a lot of student requests for that, then naturally, we'd have to figure out a way to try to make that happen. But it's, but you can't, I can't just carte blanche tell you we would do that. We may, we have two kids that want to do that. Well, it's not logistically possible for us to do something for just two students.
I think what I've been pleased with is Ms. Douglas with Derek Bittner and again, the rock star group. Have been trying to provide a product that gives us flexibility. That gives our teachers and our school system and you all that flexibility to say whether it's full-time, part-time, blended, or the what-if scenario.
But just keep in mind with flexibility, we still have limited resources. So when we say that, we can't run buses three times a day. We can't do, there are certain things we just can't afford to do. So I mean, we're going to have as much flexibility as we can. But still, what is always part of the choices that we make is how much resource, how many resources we have to expend in that area. So it's still going to come down to whether we have the resources to do it. So we can be as creative as we can, come up with a curriculum and all that. But again, it's going to come down to resources. We gotta, we can only offer what we have money to offer.
And I think because we've offered that, some parents are very hesitant to return their children to school. And, you know, they say, would you consider opening schools in September?
Superintendent told us like a week after we started doing this, start working on a plan. Because I, there may be a lot of kids want to opt for this long-term.
But I think it's real important as you're putting it out there, because the kids are so used to Florida Virtual School and some of these other programs. I think the PR has to really say something about Citrus County Virtual School. So be real, real careful with that name so that they know that they can be a Crystal River High Pirate. Sorry about that, not Citrus.
Why are you sorry?
Well, because there's only two of us now.
No, we have three!
Oh, that's right. But it's important that they don't look at this as an option and then make the mistake of going into another virtual program. So we have to be real, real careful as we put this out. You know the Chronicle is gonna be good to us because they've been very, very good to our kids. But we need to put it out, and it needs to be our schools. And so the kids don't make a mistake because they, there's just so many opportunities.
And I've heard a number of mothers who are ready for the school buses. They won't put those kids on it. That's what I've been hearing. Yeah.
I just wanna state also that we have reached out to other districts. Pasco County is one specifically that we have been working with. Just as we start this endeavor, they've been doing it for many years and have a solid virtual program with several options. So we have to think about that, too. This is going to be our first year, and we want it to be successful. So that will be a key component as well as we're working with other districts in best practices in starting this. I just wanted to state that.
And you know, one of the suggestions, one of the ideas that was brought to me dealt with, you know, reducing the number of students at a physical school building. And one of the ways you could do that is students come on Mondays, Wednesdays, and the others have, or, you know, however you wanna work it. The other half comes on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and everybody's online Friday. I mean, there are options like that. Are, is the committee, are you all looking at how that?
That would be an option, Mr. Dodd, that's really being driven by CDC guidelines. Because at that point, we're not giving kids options. We're telling them, half of what you do is gonna be online. We're not giving them the option to come full-time brick and mortar. If we go to that method, now we're making that decision for those kids, which is, which we would do if the CDC had guidelines that required us to reduce the number of people in the building. That would certainly be an option. But that wouldn't be giving them an option. To me, giving them an option is then deciding, I wanna come to school every day because I don't learn this way, the way we're doing it now, or I wanna continue what I'm doing.
Right, but wouldn't the option though be that that would be the, what you call the brick and mortar program versus the virtual program? And so what I'm just saying is if you look at scenarios, that is a possible scenario that we can face.
Given, yeah, if we're given, given those parameters, that would certainly be something that we could face.
We just, I think what the challenge that we have today is, as a board, staff every day is faced with trying to build that plane and figure out what they needed to do to even keep it in the air. FSBA has talked to us so much about, we've got to be flexible. We've gotta be flexible with staff to give them that latitude to figure out those pieces. Because right now, I know from Friday to Monday yesterday to tomorrow, it keeps changing. And it's, and it's gonna change next Monday potentially with, if we enter Phase Two.
And some things from the state are gonna have to change, too, because as what you just proposed, I would have the same, Mr. Bishop would have the same transportation cost as he would regularly, but we're only draw half the FTE. And right now, our FTE only pays for about forty percent of our transportation cost as it is. So now you're gonna cut that down in half, and you'd only be funding about twenty percent of your transportation cost because you're only transporting half the kids on any given day. So the way the state funded it now, we would take a huge hit in transportation FTE for that. We wouldn't be able to do that unless we dipped into our other money, our operating money.
We don't have any other money.
No. And who else are gone?
I'll tell you that one step further. If we go to like a on-day, off-day, A-day, B-day, that is going to drastically impact how we have been able to provide services out of our food service department. Because we're gonna have to have the same staff, and we're only gonna be distributing half the number of meals because they only come on, say, Tuesday, Monday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Friday, or however that works. That's half the number of meals. We get a subsidy from USDA of about six hundred thousand dollars, and that subsidy is a function of the number of lunches that we serve in a calendar year. So if we're only serving half of that, that's automatically a three hundred thousand dollar hit. In the food service department, we've been very fortunate, in the school district, that our food service department offsets the cost of salaries for custodians and teacher aides as they help do supervision and capture your lunches.
And materials.
We no longer do that. Last year, our free reduced lunch rate was sixty-eight percent. So that tells us sixty-eight percent of our students have a need to be fed while at school. We'll probably come to school two days a week. We can only give them meals on two days of the week.
Well, we can be flexible there, though. I mean, obviously, there's a way you can still have a come, have a plan to have some draw, have some locations in the district to.
Obviously, it's a bit for staff, and I can't get FTE for sending the buses out there.
No, I mean, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think we gotta be a little bit flexible with that. I think.
Mr. Dodd, I'll be flexible with anything the board wants to do. My job is to inform the board that there is a serious financial impact or consequence of doing these things. Certainly, whatever the will of the board is and what we can afford to do, we will gladly do in our departments.
I don't understand, January, when we run out of money, that's when the time to pay it is. It's gonna cost us money if we don't have it. I'm just telling you now, those kind of plans, the way the state funds us, would not fund themselves.
Right.
We would have to fund those through alternative funding.
And you're saying the state needs to be more flexible?
Well, I don't, I don't foresee that coming, but.
I don't either.
And that, that needs to continue to be our message.
Yes.
But you know, as a board, you know, in Florida School Board Association, we need to continue to lobby for that flexibility so staff can have opportunities and options. Because right now, I mean, transportation, Mr. Bishop, I know that's weighing on you heavily, and I understand, and food service. Because to me, that's half of our kids that aren't getting fed in a traditional way. And there, we go again to FDA, they've been providing some flexibility now, but it's not clear that that will be the flexibility option of how we're funded.
There's no guarantee that's on the campaign report.
And that's, those are those things we have to keep asking for and mindful of. I just, you know, I look at today, and I think it's very hard for you all to tell us exactly how we're gonna be able to operate come up, come up, you know, this fall. And I don't want to box you in with that because you may have to propose some things to us that we're gonna have to, you know, take very seriously. And, and I don't think any of you all want us to be in those boats any harder than to make this the best it possibly can for our students. I will just say, and Ms. Powers, you always do, mental health. I know that's been part of you all in the background of what that looks like. That's a concern that we all have. This is hard on these kids. It is hard on our staff. It's hard on you all in this room because I know there's a lot of sleepless nights going on. Ms. Kahler, bless her heart, she's gotten, and Dr. Hebert has gotten my phone call late at night or my texts going, "Have we thought about?" And it's like, and I will tell you, the comfort is, yes, we have. I'm glad you're thinking that, too. But yes, we have. That's exactly what we're working on. We've gotta continue to give them that room to get those jobs done.
But I think, and I think what you're saying, too, and I went right to the mental health and, you know, are going to the social hospital, most of them are bringing them back. Doing an A-B day, I would totally disagree with that, only because it's not consistent. And I think these kids need to come back, and they need to be consistently in school, either on our online classes or in our classrooms. But I'm a product of a rolling block. I'm a product of morning split sessions when they were building brand-new schools back in the old days. And I didn't like any of them. And I hated the A-B rolling block schedule. I just, and I think it's very important that we bring these kids back into our schools with consistency, what they left, offer them these online things because they are gonna come back traumatized and a little bit scared. But they adjusted to the Alice program, and they love it. So whatever we do, as long as we're consistent with them, but doing anything like that, old rolling block or split sessions, I just, I can't see that.
That would be an option if we had to reduce capacity of our.
Only if the state says so.
And for me, that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about. If the, if the choice was we reduce capacity, I want us to say it's either the whole thing or nothing. It's all. I mean, I think we gotta be ready for a reduced-capacity school year, and that's all I'm saying. Those are things that we need to be discussed and talked about because we don't know what's gonna happen, and that could be one of it. But you would agree, though, that if it went to reduce capacity?
We were told we have reduced capacity. It'll probably come with some protocols and then have.
And those would be CDC, I would say, usual fault.
Yeah, well, I just think it's.
And then it would be something that we would have, there would be a lot of options there, so we would have to be doing those kind of things.
Yeah. I don't think anything is on or off the table as far as you all are concerned. It's just.
Absolutely not. We just wanna continue to say, at the end of the day, we have to make all the figures in both columns add up to the same number. So that's all we're saying is we've gotta be able to pay for it, and it's gotta.
All I know is my kindergarten granddaughter had an Alice drill. She wanted an Alice drill with her lesson. She got one of those. Just saying. She's in kindergarten, yeah. They love that thing.
But you're right. Nothing is off the table at this point. Everything changes. It's just like we ask our students and our teachers to be flexible, and it's the same thing we have to be flexible, too. Because the governor could come out tomorrow and say, we're in Phase Two or Three, or we could go back to Phase Zero. We don't know that.
And I think one of the things that, when it comes to flexibility, I think we have to remember, we would ordinarily, staff would be starting to work on multitude of staffing plans. In fact, I think you guys were before this all started. I think that's very hard to even imagine what that is right now. I think we have to, again, be flexible to say, that staff, when I think of custodians, what, you know, and what Mr. Bishop would be saying, "Well, we're gonna have to think about this after each this, and this after each this." We don't know all of what that's gonna look like. I know you all are working on that, and I know that there's any number of scenarios, and it would change the way that staffing looks. It doesn't mean we're reducing staffing. I don't wanna imply that. But what we're just saying is how each school is set up may have to have some fluidness to it depending on what we're gonna have to do to function and operate that school.
Yeah, some of the early conversations that's come out as far as moving forward, if we go back into session, some of the things that are required at schools in terms of sanitation, cleaning, so on and so forth. I did respond, and I share with you, these staff are schools that want custodian per twenty-three thousand square feet. To do the things that we do on a daily basis would cost, it would require an extreme increase in the number of custodians that are on campus. They can't, they can't do what they're doing. So again, certainly, we gotta be flexible. I just want everyone to be informed that these things come at a high price. One of the things we're monitoring, we're very concerned about on the transportation side, is social distancing. If we go to, no matter what's gonna we go to, if the requirement's gonna be you can't have more than ten kids on a bus, we're gonna need five hundred fourteen buses. We got a hundred, we have a hundred ninety-four buses in our fleet, have a hundred forty-four bus drivers, and a hundred thirty of those positions are filling. We have shorts, bus drivers and buses. If it goes to where we had to have twenty-five people per bus, we still need another twenty-some buses. I think two hundred eighteen buses have come on the state, off the top of my head. So we're monitoring that. We're kinda following that because we wanna go come to the board and give you all the information you need to make the most important decisions that you can. But there's some significant, significant cost increases. The things that have been projected or being proposed loosely at this point in time, they are very expensive, very, very expensive.
And you're saying there's no money that's gonna come?
I have no indication of any additional money to come to help offset the things I spoke about the other day.
I think we, the best we can hope for is supplanting some of the loss at the best. I think that this goes back to, I just try and circle us back. I think that that's why a robust virtual school option is essential in providing more options and providing some flexibility to what Mr. Dodd was concerned with, which is reducing, you know, potentially we may be reducing that number and all of the pieces that we've talked about. So I think that it's the right core piece to get out of the way. And I know Ms. Douglas could not be working any faster to try and get it done.
It's aggressive.
It's very aggressive.
So let me just, if I can move on to the next, I had a few more items on this to address. So with assessment, which is led by Mrs. Crowell, our Director of Research and Accountability, they are reviewing and looking at different assessments when students come back because we know they've not been in school. So we wanna assess when they're on campus, what that looks like and what they need. So they're looking at some different assessments internally, assessments that we have, and other assessments that we currently use that we can put into place. We're also working on surveys for parents as well as surveys for staff. So we have a team that's been developing what would be a parent survey. So Mr. Dodd, as you spoke about, trying to find out, that would give us that indication of what are families looking at as we think about next year. And then there's a staff survey, because we need to know what are staff's indication of, I'm interested in a virtual model, a blended model, or I'm willing just to do brick and mortar. I don't wanna be involved in that. Mrs. Kahler has indicated, and I don't know if you wanna speak to that, about making sure when we share this with parents, I don't want parents to think what we've been doing is virtual. What we've been doing is called remote instruction, which is very different than being in a virtual program. So we wanna make sure that that definition to a family is very, very clear, that they understand, oh, if I'm gonna have my student sign up for virtual, it's exactly what I've been doing, because it isn't. And they're gonna need to understand that. So we have to be very clear with providing that information to them. Along with that is engaging the families. So Mrs. Johnson, who is our Title I Coordinator, is overseeing a family engagement group, and she's gonna pull some parents together to gather information on what are they thinking as we move back into school, and what does that look like? What are their concerns? What are their questions? So as I've talked about, we're trying to reach out to as many stakeholders as we can. So as we build this, it's not just the Ed Services team, it's everybody involved. We also are involving teachers. So on various committees, we've had a variety of teachers. I've actually been in contact with Vicki Smith, the President of the CCA, informing her of where we're moving. She's gonna be involved in, as we go through this, reviewing this, giving her feedback from her organization, as well as other teachers in the district who are involved in the process as well to review. We've spoken to Kathy Androwski, who's Director of Technology, because we have to make sure that we have the tech support for the teachers and for the families. And as we've looked at our learning management system, one of the struggles we've had, as you may have heard being out in the community, is if a student wants to do distance learning, and so they want to access the curriculum, if they don't have Wi-Fi in their home, they're unable to do that. So we've asked, when we've looked at some of the learning management systems that are out there, is there a way that I can take my tablet, my iPad, go to McDonald's, upload or download whatever I need on my learning management system, take it home? My house doesn't have Wi-Fi, but I can open up my learning management system. I can do the assignment. It saves it on the iPad. I can go back to McDonald's, get myself an ice cream cone, and I'll throw it back to the teacher.
Tell them to go to the library.
To the library.
They're gonna go to McDonald's.
Very easy. But the idea is that we would be able to make the technology available to them whether they're, whether they have the Wi-Fi at home or whether they don't. So we're trying to look at that. Now, we still may have those families that say, if I'm doing remote learning, because we don't know, we may have to go into that mode next year, that still want paper pencil, and we'll still be able to offer a variety of those options for the students. And again, as you mentioned, and I'm just gonna bring this back up, we know no matter what we do, there will be a financial impact. All of this is a financial impact. So we have to look at what is it that we're trying to offer? What's the financial impact? How is it gonna impact the district? But at the end of the day, I've always been focused on what's best for kids, and we have to focus on what's best for our students. I can say that Mrs. Himmel very much believes, whether it's scheduling, whatever it is we're doing, she's on conference calls, she has a small group of superintendents, because she knows her role on the fags, the district superincidence. She's on a group with them at the executive board level, and they've had conversations about what does it look like. I know she shared, and I don't know if Mr. Bishop, Mr. Mullen can agree, that some of this scheduling piece is really at the bottom of the list. Their goal is, they want kids, all kids on campus as much as they can as a group. Would you concur that that, I believe that would be her belief?
I think that's all the way to DOE and beyond. I mean, that, I think, is the expectation, is it not?
Yes. So those are the main pieces. I think I've covered everything that I wanted to address as far as the education side. I know you brought up some of the other pieces, Mr. Bishop. Did you have any other specific questions? Or do you have feedback? Because I really am here to kinda gather any questions that you have that if I can't answer, I can certainly find out, or feedback to say, why don't you consider this as you all are developing the plan? Because again, I have all these committees. They are deep in the middle of it right now, working through it. And we'll, again, you will get, it will be shared with you, as we did before with our remote learning plan. But I still would like any feedback that you have or things that you haven't thought about this. Mrs. Kahler and I will definitely jot those down.
I want to be sure that there were mental health facilities, groups, people to work with the adults and with the students because you mentioned earlier, people are stressed out, and the teacher group is stressed out as well as the student. So can we check to be sure there are people available that are healthy?
You know, that brings up, Ms. Powers, this is a good point, is even as they go into the summer, you know, we, I think part of the care plan was really good because it included some resources in there that we could, teachers could, even in conversations with students and so forth, ensure that that was reiterated. Maybe there's something as we go into summer that that could get.
I know this is a flyer that they have, that they're working on, and again, this is not a complete project. But I know Ms. Greco and Ms. Humbah, who oversee our social, emotional, and mental health in our district, are working on some things. Certainly, I can make sure that they add to the bottom of that. We've asked every guidance department in all of our schools. We've asked every guidance department in all of our schools, put on their website, social, emotional, mental health supports for families as well. So I know if you go to many of the websites, I've asked Ms. Greco to check, and she said they all have various resources available now for families. We're working on a flyer that will go home, you know, the families that pick up the meals, we're working on a flyer that we'll give to them, so they can take it home, so they have it for the summer. So those families that do not have, maybe have the internet or have access to some of the online stuff, we're providing it for them through the meal delivery program. So I know they're working on that.
Maybe that could be incorporated into the, throughout the summer, in some social media pushes? So that, because I would agree, I think, I think we're gonna have a greater need than all of us can really appreciate.
I just had a staff meeting in the middle yesterday, and the guidance counselor there is doing the SEL, and she's actually having 99%, she's having more people participate than our schoolteachers are having in their classes. And so she's already been asked by the kids, and she's going to do her program all through the summer. So I think you're gonna find that some of your guidance counselors in the schools are gonna continue that SEL piece.
It used to be not as acceptable, because I think all this. She goes all the way down, she's already been pleading, so anyone realizes they've been under pressure, because the entire world is under pressure. And so I think they're more willing to go in and talk about it and get that.
I've got a question, will the virtual learning then have more kind of face-to-face engagement with students than the remote learning has? I mean, how do you envision that? I think that's important.
Well, and that, that's a good point, Mr. Dodd. One of the pieces with our learning management system, once we adopt one, will give us more oversight into the student engagement during the instruction. Because as we've said, we have a variety of systems. We have no oversight, no way to go in and help monitor that. We want to look at providing those expectations. So if they're in, if they're going through the virtual system, yes, there are checks and balances, things that have to be done, students have to check in, they have to post, all of those things. If we move to, if we have to use our learning management system, go to remote learning, much like we're doing now, we'll have one system, we'll have those expectations for teachers to say, you must do a weekly, I'm just gonna make an example, like a weekly Zoom lesson, or two weekly Zoom lessons with your students. You need to set those up. We would have those expectations brought up because we'll have been developing it now, versus when we were developed again very quickly.
And we'll have courses that were designed to be delivered online, as opposed to us trying to take courses and deliver them online. There's a difference.
Yes, there is.
These will be designed to be delivered online. And that's why they're spending so much time selecting the courses. We want something that, right now, we're just taking what we had and trying to deliver it in a distance learning format.
Right.
That wasn't necessarily designed to do that, but we're modifying it to make it, to accommodate that. So involved, we will have curriculum that is designed to be delivered online. So it'll definitely have more face-to-face interaction.
And like, one of the questions I think we should ask parents, if they would prefer to have a set time for an online class, that the child has to be online at that time. I think, you know, I've heard that mentioned, you know, by some of my parents that talk to me about it, is that they would rather have their child know, you know, this time, they're supposed to be checked in with their teacher, and there's gonna be an online assignment, it may not be a lecture, but it would be there when they have to be checked in.
And those are pieces as far as developing that for next year, if it is virtual, but then we put that into place. And that's all part of the syllabus. You know, when you went to college, you have a syllabus, here's what you have to do. Those, all those expectations we'd built initially, so the families would know that.
And they may look very different in elementary versus middle or high school. So we're looking at it and understanding that it may be very different between the different levels.
Right, and the online learning, or the learning management system would have expectations for teachers. I mean, you mentioned about that, you know, you said once or twice, it might be.
Could be every day, I don't know that.
So that they will know what their, what the expectation is. I think that's important too, because I don't believe that we'll be able to continue without the testing side of the house being, you know, I mean, we're still gonna, I think testing's coming back, and we certainly want to see the rigor for, we're, learning is still there, so when children are tested, we're not gonna see this huge drop. Also, when do you see this information being shared with parents? I mean, the options, I mean, for classes next year, I mean.
Well, first, we have to do the survey. I mean, that, like I said, we're in the development of the survey. So I've been in conversation with Mrs. Himmel, and as soon as we're ready to release that survey, we can release the survey out to families. Once we get that information back, then we can start moving. And again, we're in the middle of getting the virtual school provided, so we can advertise, because we want to say to the family, here's the content we're getting the virtual from. Because a parent can make a decision to say, I'm not comfortable with that content, because I'd rather go with this, because they know. Some parents are very well versed in different program models. So we have to make sure we select the very best program, so the parents are gonna say, well, you know what, I'm gonna choose Citrus County, because they've got the best program content we're delivering.
And we're gonna have to market it. That's why I think the communication side, I mean, the sooner we can get it out. So, you know, I mean, I'm, my assumption there's gonna be big changes to our traditional schooling for next, at least the start of next year. We're less than three months away from the first day of school, right? I mean, that's all it stands for, and so.
And I will share with you, I know that this has been a drastic impact on families and the community, but I will tell you, I've heard from many teachers, this has made them, I don't want to say re-energize them, but they've thought of how to do things differently that they wouldn't have done before. We've been engaging families in ESE meetings through a Zoom platform that would have not been able to engage. They couldn't get to the school, they couldn't make it. So we're, Ms. Kirby is already working on, how can we continue something like this next year? So if a parent wants to participate in their child's ESE, and they can't get, they only have 20 minutes for lunch from their work, they can get on, they can zoom in, they can be a part of it, see it, get all the information, have the screen shared, and then be able to pop out. So it is gonna change, I think it's gonna change how we work. We here have been using that product more, where we don't maybe have to pull principals every month for a meeting. We can say, we're gonna do a 30-minute meeting in the morning, we're gonna hop on Zoom, we're gonna go through, we can screen share, get our stuff done, and keep principals in schools. So I do think this is gonna drastically change how we do business and how we operate in our district. For the benefit.
Maybe that's true, because students are gonna be suspended from school, that parents could be on Zoom and do the talking.
Oh, homebound, it changes, you know. Dr. Heber, it's a good transition on that. So IDEA, and you're not gonna have all the answers for this, but I think one of the things, I was on a conference call last week, and one of the big concerns is that the federal government has not provided any waiver of the expectations that school districts are under to meet the requirements under IDEA. We all want to meet those requirements for students. We all want to provide students with those opportunities of equal learning, equal access. The challenge is, there seems to be an expectation that we're gonna have to provide at the local level an IEP review for every student when they come back this year.
Every student meeting?
Every student that, I'm sorry, every ESE student will have to, instead of just on their annual review, they all have, doesn't matter when they had their annual review, they're gonna have to get one when they come back. That's an enormous undertaking, that districts, as we know, we just aren't, we just don't have the resources to do that in the classic sense. That virtual learn, you know, that virtual Zooming meetings, in some cases, it may be, it may be simple, it may be a quick review, but in other cases, with those achievement graphs being wider, that could be more challenging. Are we looking at that setup as to how to meet that? Because what, and Mr. Bradshaw, I think you're still back there somewhere, that's probably, it seems like, for districts and school boards, that seems to be the big concern right now, is we're gonna have to meet those, and we're not getting any real protection outside of, we better be doing it. And so I know we do that anyway, but I think we have to be mindful of the fact that I would want us all to understand, we, we've gotta have some compassion on both sides of this, because we want to make sure every student gets their needs, but that's a lot of students and a lot of resources. And now the big concern is, you had a student that already had an achievement gap under ESE, we've been providing them services, and now they've been out of the loop, because virtual learning may not be meeting their needs. So I would just say you.
And I know that Ms. Kirby's plan, when she submitted what they're working on, is really looking at, they listed, you know, determining the student's placement, looking at their IEP, the 504, looking at all of those pieces to help make those decisions.
And those achievement gaps, when this started to now is part of that big concern.
That is.
I would just, any of us that have and can have conversations at the national level with any of our elected leaders, we do need to be saying, we've got to have some common sense as we work through this. We need to meet the needs of our students, but we need to recognize that we do have, unfortunately, limitations that we're under. And I am saying that as a person who has received ESE services most of their, all of their academic child life. But at the same time, I always believe common sense has prevailed, and we just need to use that. I am grateful for the compassion we have, and it goes back to why I'm such a supporter of a Citrus Virtual opportunity, because I think we can meet those needs of our students better than if they leave us. We can't give them that support the way we could for our own students.
And we're also looking at that for our ELL students. Mrs. Kayler oversees the ELL program, so we're looking at that for those students as well, the achievement gap, and providing those supports for students. So I've listed some things, y'all listed, is there anything else? And if you think of something, you know, feel free to call me or call Mrs. Kayler, we'll certainly include and share that. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, very good information. Mr. Bishop, we already did Goldenrod?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and here it comes. She's fertilized the tree, and now she makes a beautiful blossom. And we're going to be told that.
Good to see you.
We don't have any.
So budget-wise, we're kind of in the same place we were, you know, with planning for next year. We're in a kind of sit and wait, we don't know what next year's gonna hold. I've been listening to you guys talk about everything for next year.
But you walked down a couple times, I saw you.
Yes. So, you know, we're kind of waiting and seeing what the state decides they're gonna do for next year. The Citrus CARES Act, we're also waiting. Our contact at the state, there's rumblings of a request for application guidelines to come out. So I sent her a bunch of questions, like, is it federal, is it state? Are we drawing it down, or are we blah, blah, blah? And she just said, there's rumblings of an RFA. I'll let you know hopefully by the end of next week. So, you know, I think, I think they're getting hit with lots of questions, the DOE is, of how this is gonna be disseminated. So, you know, we're anxiously waiting, and it's kind of dot, 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 more to come, and we'll find out when we find out. It was a busy month budget-wise, but not real busy in our amendment. We had to add some budget for COVID-related expenses, masks, sanitizers, some overtime for tech people. And, you know, I'm sure that's something that CARES Act stuff will cover if it, you know, when we get that. We didn't have a lot else going on budget-wise. We did, you know, adjust the budget for the construction projects you approved last month. And so we put a little bit of money back in the fund, in the capital fund. Right now, our general fund is sitting at, we brought in about 80% of our revenues, and we've spent about 66% of our expenditures that we budgeted for, which is right about this time. We'll be running double check runs through May and June to pay our teachers and our support staff out for their summer pay. So that's when our expenditures start catching up with our revenues. So our other funds are still remaining healthy at this time. So we're holding firm as best we can. In April, we did make our fifth sinking fund payment towards our bonds. So we're at about 15 million that we have saved up for that now. So we still have some years to go, but we were able to buy that right before everything started to go down. It's a little less than what we got last year in interest, but we were able to kind of lock it in pretty quickly. So we did move a cut, a little bit of other money around to try and lock in some rates that we could, because interest rates are, you know, seeing their lowest that we've seen. Not the lowest that I've seen since I've been in this position, but lower than what we were seeing earlier this year, so.
Will there be any other advantage coming up, do you know, with regards to just the way that the economy has turned on those bond rates for next year? I'm thinking.
Not sure yet.
Okay.
Not sure yet.
I know you don't have your personal wallet.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, you know, I do still, I am still being told, you know, fuel will probably stay low just because there's a war going on with Middle East and Russia, and that's keeping our rates low, plus nobody's driving right now, so, or they're just starting to drive again, so the demand is very low right now. But they foresee those rates staying pretty low all through next year, according to, you know, our advisors, so. Any other questions of me right now?
I have a question. All the, there's money, I know Mr. Mellon had responded to the question about that, and then you can see, you're saying college money. That's actually gonna go back, is there money that's gonna go back to students, correct?
Yes, 50% of it has to go to students. The other 50% can, but out of the other 50%, if you have any COVID expenses related to operating, that can come out of another 50%, but the first 50% has to go back to students.
Correct, correct. And it's sitting, and it just went into the G5 account, which is where we draw it down. So we'll be drawing that down probably this week, and getting checks, WTC will be getting checks out to students.
We could probably, I think our district's slated to get 500,000, right? Total for that. We'll get, I think, the first draw's like 241,000.
Yeah, that was for the students.
The second draw's a 250,000, and there's a $49,000 final draw.
And so are we gonna do a press release on that? Or, I mean, we need to notify students, right, that they're gonna have.
Yeah, WTC is doing that.
It's already been working on it.
They've been already working on that, that is part of their application process to get the money. And then there's a criteria by which students will apply for. It's gonna be audited, just like we would do Pell Grants and those kind of things. So there's a process that they have to follow and then go through with that.
So they're still gonna have to apply?
The students will, so yeah, I mean, it'll be based on what their situation is, their income levels and all those things.
That's good.
Any other questions? All right, well, you have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Legal Matters?
Nothing at this time.
We need to approve some minutes.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd.
No, Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. Kennedy, and a second by Ms. Fitzbryant, to approve the minutes of the April 14th administrative hearing, regular meeting, and public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes up 5-0. Any other business that might come before the door, Mr. Mellon, have we exhausted you?
No, ma'am. Ms. Himmel did, as per the board permission, allowed her to move forward out of vote on certain items. She had to make a calendar change to the existing calendar, because we had half-day PD days built in, and we didn't want to confuse students, we didn't want to confuse staffs, and we just made those full instructional days. They occurred last month, early.
Now you tell us.
Yeah. And she had to make a decision on what to do with those days, so they are calendar changes. And then there were some, on the job description for Coordinator of Special Programs, the International Baccalaureate Program was added to that job description. That was the only change, it was spelled out of there, and then just some.
And who's having that?
Has that position come before us yet, or has that been transferred in?
I don't believe we've made that.
Okay, I was gonna tease, but I'm not.
So they had to add International Baccalaureate into that program, and then that person used to report to Director Secondary Ed. We don't have a Director Secondary Ed, because we're cutting back on that area. So we, they report to Dr. Heber, which is his Chief Academic Officer. So we had to make those two, not content changes, minor changes on the job description. So she did that as well. So those are the only two items that she exercised that authority on, okay?
And then, wasn't she gonna bring up the graduation exercises, or?
She wanted, and again, all we need to know from the board is whether you're attending all four graduations, all five graduations. If you're attending all five graduations, let us know, so we can put you, have a space there for you, so we can adhere to social distancing. The other option was for the board, for you all, to split it up and keep the number of people at the graduation to a minimum. The other option was for the board, for you all to split it up and keep the number of people at the graduation to a minimum. And each of you pick one and attend one. So, uh, that's, that's at the sole discretion of the board. What you choose to do, just let, we just need to know so we know whether or not to have stations set up for you at each of the graduation or just one station for one person per graduation.
Mr. Mullin, while I, I know we all want to, in theory, we would all want to be there. Realistically though, what impact is that going to have to the staff? Um, and because that, my one concern is as well, I want to make sure I honor them. I, at the same time, I don't want to take an opportunity where they have a teacher that's been important to them and I'm sitting there taking away that teacher's spot because of social distance.
We, we have asked, and Mr. Bishop, uh, may be better to answer this than I did because he worked a lot with the schools on this. But we've asked the schools, uh, to limit the amount of staff that is there because we have to limit the amount of parents or the amount of, uh, family that can come for students. We felt like if we were going to have anybody there, it should be the students' families. And since we have to limit that to one car, uh, we asked the staff to not, uh, to limit to, the schools to limit the staff there just to who they need to run the event. So we're not going to have a lot of spectators there. But again, we're trying to adhere to social distancing guidelines. And given the state that we're in now, those were the best things that we could decide at the time to minimize everybody's exposure to each other. Now, by, by the time that occurs, if we're into phase three or phase four, the superintendent is willing to move into, uh, doing something differently. But as it is right now, we have to make a decision based on right now. So there will be very limited staff at the graduation. There will be, uh, the families will only have one car piece, if I'm forgetting something, Mr. Bishop. Uh, even, even Ms. Himmel's staff, we will be at the school to respond to situations should, should anything come up. But we will not be at the graduation. We'll be somewhere located at a different part of the building, monitoring it on the radio so that we can respond if they need us, but we're not in the, in the vicinity. She wants to keep it as minimal as possible. But with that being said, we don't want to influence what you want to do. If the board tells us, we all five want to be at every graduation, we'll figure out a way to do that. I just, I don't want you to envision that there's going to be five seats for you to sit on the stage. That's not going to happen. Uh, there'll, there'll be five of you spread out in the parking lot where you can see the students come up. Or we could put one of you.
Do you suggest that we each of us choose one, thirty, twenty seats? I, I, I'm just thinking that I don't want to give up an opportunity as much as I want to be at every single one of them. I don't, I mean, Ms. Count, I know every one of you all that have been teachers. That, that's, that's what's really important to these kids. And I don't, I want to be there to honor them. I don't want to, uh, not be able to. But I am not, I do not want to make somebody make room for me and a teacher that that kid has, has helped get that kid across those stage loses out. So if they're, hey, if I have to drive my car somewhere on the side and wave at them after their processional, I'll consider that, but I don't want to intrude on a teacher losing out. Or, or any faculty, as, as a teacher.
When I talked to Mrs. Himmel when, when she sent the email out and I called her back, um, and she said that there's a thirty foot ramp on this side, thirty foot ramp on this side, and she could.
Mr. Bishop, you may be.
Yeah, we, we have built a modified stage in the main apartment. Um, the stage is ten by eighteen with two thirty foot ramps along each other.
So she said something about maybe placing us behind the ramps along.
If that's, if that's what you guys want to do, we'll, we can definitely make that happen. Um, as far as seeing, I don't think you'll be able to sit behind it because of those.
Yeah.
I think that would not be very good for you. But, uh, if this world war wants to come, we can make that happen.
But I, I don't, and I, I don't want to paint that it's going to be uncomfortable, but it's, you're going to be there a few hours, uh, in a parking lot.
Each.
Each. So I don't know if that's something that you, you want to do five times. I know you want to see the kids graduate, but it's just in one of those situations that there's no way to do that for you in the manner that we used to do, that we, we've done it in the past.
And I, and I did tell Sam on that, my phone call to her, that, you know, I thought it would be nice if all of us were there. Uh, but she did not mention that they were limiting the faculty at that time. So I, I really do, if you're going to be limited, administration's going to be limited, and faculty's going to be limited, then I, I can change my mind. I don't want to, I don't want to press five board members out there. And I don't mind standing for a couple of hours. I mean, I, you did it as a teacher for eight hours. Um, but, um, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to say that we're more important than anybody else in today's kids' graduation.
Not all the parents, children, teachers are important there. We don't want to take places.
Yeah. Well, they're, they're not, the one child's going to get out of the car and walk across that stage. And family has to stay in the car. Can't have a second car? Can't have a trailer. I read. But now I, I see a different perspective, but I did not realize that the staff was going to be limited.
Yeah. And, and there's a million reasons why people could use a second car and a million reasons why. And we, we get all that, that we have to, we have, we had to come up with something that was doable, that was feasible. And at the same time, that was fair to everybody, consistent, uh, and try to, to minimize anybody's exposure. The last thing we would want is that an event that we planned to do this, and then as a result, we end up with, uh, seventy people with COVID nineteen at, at the end of it.
Well, you know, you're going to have, you're going to have some pickup trucks that have twelve people in the, in the bed.
Well, we say W T C, Bradshaw and then the three.
All of course we're there. That's all of course we're issued with the right.
So, yeah, um, Chair.
Go ahead and just say which school we'll go to.
I'll go to Crass.
Well, are we going to have a chance for more input? I haven't given my input yet.
You're not.
Now, listen, I, I want us to be consistent. I mean, I don't have a problem with being at one graduation. I don't have a problem with being at all five graduations. But I think in light of what we're facing, if we are consistent and we're, there's a school board represent, representative at each graduation, that means we'd all be at one of them, then we're sending the message to the community that, yeah, your school board really does care about this. It's a big, huge accomplishment, you know, for our kids and we're going to be there to support. And there's, there will be a school board representative at each school board. I am good with that. But if, if, if you all think it's more important to send the message that for us all to be there, then I'm good with that too. So that's kind of the way I feel.
Well, I've been hearing what people are saying and I didn't understand that the teachers weren't going to be there. So I agree with what Tom said. And I think one, one for each one would be fine.
And Doug, what, what?
And I'm happy to make friends.
Well, you know, I would do, I would do Citrus or W T C. I would think, um, you know, I mean, I know a lot of kids that are at, at Citrus. So I'd be glad to take Citrus. Um, I'd be glad to take W T C. I mean, of course, you're the senior, you're more senior on the board than I am. So I think you would, you should get your choice.
And I'm. That was very, very nice, Mr. Dodd.
Let's write that down.
I just don't want to, I don't want that to go by. That was very nice.
I have to say one thing. Tom gets Christopher River High School.
No, I, I, I will do whatever.
No, you got Jen to be walking.
No, she doesn't walk this year. She walks, she, thank goodness. I, I have one more year. Just because I don't want to lose her. So, so I don't, I'm.
Christopher High School, I'll do Citrus side.
That's fine. Yep. I'll do W T C.
Okay. I'll do the Cantor and Ginger will do Crest.
Maybe, um, and we could get, we could either, uh, maybe we could get with Lindsay or if there's somebody, maybe we could get a sign made up that just says your school board loves you or something. And each of us could, each of the graduations hold that.
Oh, yeah. Good idea.
That way we can, you know, and have all of our names on it.
You could get Carver cut out. We, we will talk to this player about that.
I'm just, this player might be.
We can take our pictures and make them face and on.
Thank you for reminding me about that, Mr. Dodd. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Any other business?
No, I just want to mention on the Zoom meetings, Pleasant Grove Fernando and Christopher River Primary and the, and all of them. But which of the schools, each one of them emphasize that they want parents and the community to work together and make the plans for learning, for education. And strongly suggested that they work together. And I like that very much. That was a good way to go.
Um, along the lines of what we just talked about, because we're in an open meeting, we can probably ask this and Mr. Bradshaw will correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, he will. Yes, I will.
Do you think that, you know, because of the circumstances, we talked about what we're going to do to be modified. I, I'm willing to, uh, join with you all if we want to put an ad, you know, there's a congratulations ad that can be put into the Chronicle. Um, I would fund part of that if we want to all five, you know, personally fund that. And, uh, and do a congratulations. So, uh, Mr. Bradshaw, is there any reason we, if we're doing an interview, okay? He's giving us a thumbs up. So, um, I, I, Chair, for woman, I would let you, uh, work with Ms. Lindsay if you want.
I'll work with Ms. Lindsay and then I'll get you a copy.
And then just tell us whatever we owe you. But I just thought that would be a nice thing we can do. And it's our money, not the district's doing it. And we can, uh, let, let them all know.
And we make so much of it. You might as well share it.
We, we love these kids. We, we love these kids. Um. They're, uh, I, I, I want to do, uh, I've been in the Zoom meetings. We've been doing so much. I think all of us are getting really good at, at Zoom meetings. Um, Florida School Board Association, if you aren't doing it, I know I've seen this, uh, Ms. Powers, I've seen Mr. Dodd there. Ms. Bryan is everywhere. Um, and, and Ms. Count, I walked in and she was in a Zoom meeting here. But if you get a chance on Friday mornings, uh, usually it's Friday mornings, there's a great meetings that are really helping us know we're not unique, we're not alone in what's going on here. Um, it gives me comfort though, because our staff is truly outstanding. Uh, it truly is. And, and I'm grateful to each and every one of them because when I come back and say, hey, this is, you know, a question we're all asking, they, they already have, yep, we've thought about that, we're thinking also of, and they give you three more, you know, considerations. Um, I'm not, I'm going to end with just this. If you haven't had a chance, and I'm going to ask, um, Lisa Dell to send it out. John Dell at Citrus High School did the most amazing virtual, he's done two of them now. Uh, one with Breeze and one with, Mr. Bishop, do you remember the other group's name?
I forgot the name of it.
There's enough, it's.
Her, uh, category five?
Category five.
That's right.
And they are off the chart amazing. Um, share them on your social media, but, but go and visit them because we have some amazing talent. And again, um, that, it's, it's, it's the kind of stuff you would see in a big city. And little old Citrus County is putting out some amazing things. So thank you to all our staff and students. From our, from our district staff here, all the way to each and every custodian, food service worker, we are so grateful to you. Um, we love you and we cannot thank you enough for what you're doing for our kids every day. Wash your hands.
Mr. Stapp?
Yes. Um, so I know that, uh, we were all kind of did a little part with the Chronicles, um, stars, Student Athletic Recognition Program that they're going to do online and that's scheduled for next Thursday. Um, and so I'm glad that, um, the board was able to be a part of that. And, um, we all saw John Murphy today, but they're continuing to recognize our student athletes. And that kind of moves into, uh, an item of discussion with the F H S A A and with the new laws that have been, uh, put forth this next year. I just want to make sure the board was aware of some of the issues. I think we're pretty well ahead of things, um, on them. But it's good to know that, uh, it's, it's good for you all to know, um, that they exist in relation to A E Bs. And the fact that A E Bs are going to have to be available at all, not just, uh, meets or games or matches, but all, at all, um, practices as well. And so the sports that meet off campus to practice are going to have to have access to an A E B. I've talked to Mr. Bishop about that and, um, and also in relation to heat related illness and cold water immersion tubs and those things, um, that are there also with, uh, summer conditioning and the, um, regulation that's going to go along with F H A, F H S A A is where in the past we had it governed over summer. Um, but now that's going to change. There's electrolytes that are going to need to be made available, uh, to athletes in addition to water. And, um, so, uh, those are issues. There's also a concern over athletic physicals. And I've talked to Mr. Bishop too about that. And you know what? There's, I don't think there's going to be a waiver. I don't think it's a smart thing for them to make a waiver for student athletes to get a waiver for a physical if they're going to be competing next year. I mean, that physical's good for three hundred and sixty-five days and, uh, you know, so there might be, you know, some larger districts have had big concerns over being able to get students in to get physicals this summer. And rightfully so. I mean, it, it's going to be a challenge and I'm not really sure how it's going to look here for those physicals. But I know that, um, you know, we're going to have to ensure that our athletes are, you know, have that physical for that pre, pre participation packet filled out. And, uh, so I just, I thought I'd make you aware that I, I've talked to Mr. Bishop. I know you had a Zoom meeting with the athletic directors today. You said, so if you want to add in on any of these things, I'd welcome your comment.
Yeah. Uh, House Bill seventy eleven, uh, was the, was the, uh, main topic of discussion. Um, we here in Citrus County are ahead of the curve in terms of the requirements being set forth as we do for effective life. First, we've been doing a lot of those things, um, ahead of time and we're proud of that. But there's things we can improve upon. Uh, one of the provisions in the legislation requires that anyone who is a coach or a volunteer coach, uh, each year annually must be notified in writing of the location, not only the A E B in close proximity to where they're practicing or, uh, conducting their activity, but all A E Bs on campus. That's one of the things that we can improve upon. Um, electrolyte replacement, that is a guideline that, let me back up. That, that piece of legislation requires F H S A to come up with a, um, bunch of different criteria. Of course, uh, one of them is, as Mr. Dodd says, electrolyte replacement. Um, I looked at the draft, um, guidelines that F H S A has adopted, or I'm sorry, that has drafted or gone for adoption. Uh, it says that schools, they suggest schools to provide electrolyte replacement. But by virtue of our, um, uh, super snack program, um, that we've implemented a couple of years ago in the district and I made it mandatory that school athletic programs go to it before practice. Uh, I've already met with Mr. Costoni. He says there are juices and drinks that he can provide through that program that will replace electrolytes. In addition to that, we also went out for our vending, uh, contract. Uh, we sent that out for bid. Coca-Cola won that bid. In that bid, we voted in such a way that they would provide the schools with, uh, different types of materials, what we call sideline gear. In that sideline gear is, uh, the powder powering. So we do have that being brought to our schools. Um, so we think we can eat that very, very easily. Uh, Mr. Dodd wrote a very important point there. That legislation does expand its coverage of, or governance of the F H S A over summer. So when you talk about your summer volleyball, some basketballs and footballs, that's now going to be governance requirements, um, imposed by F H S A on how we do those things. I'm very pleased to tell you that we meet with athletic directors today. Um, it was, it was enlightening to know that any of our sports that we've had summer conditioning, we've already required them to have a, a physical. That hadn't been legislatively imposed before, uh, now, until J- July one of this year. But we've been doing it over the last six, eight years. So we're ahead of the game there. The thing I also want to bring out is the weather stem. If you recall back in October, I brought Ed and Sarah in about the weather stem. Well, just how things work out. Uh, the F H S A was, um, required to, uh, develop guidelines dependent upon the ambient temperature, the wet bulb reading. Uh, that's what, precisely what the wet bulb, um, uh, measures. We can set those guidelines. We can take the guidance straight from F H S A, the ones that are legislatively imposed now and put them into, interface into our program to where the coaches can access that on their smartphone, on their computer, on their iPad, what have you. So we feel like we're in a very strong position, but yes, we did meet with athletic directors this morning and, uh, we have, we are confident we can make this legislation without too much disruption.
And are the, are the weather stems up now?
They are not up. We've gone through the, uh, we've gone through the, um, process of getting the contracts done through Mr. Bradshaw. We, we've got the P O. It's out of the administrative right now. They are working with maintenance to schedule the installations. We're expecting to get that scheduled this week actually.
Okay, good.
They, they had to build those and they, they customized them to the school. So, uh, for example, I made sure that we reached out to Mr. Stokes today to make sure they had the right Christopher River Pirate. We didn't want the patching along high. I understand that's a big deal over there. That's true.
It's a big one.
That's a big one. So we got to make sure we had the exact logo. So we, uh, we got all those confirmed today. So we're expecting to get that scheduled this week and we're excited about that.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Bishop, you, um, you mentioned summer. At this time, um, I think you've had a conversation with, with coaches this morning about where the, the summer workouts are for this summer.
As, as we stand here today, we are, we are not allowing our schools to, uh, do any kind of all season condition with our student athletes. You know, certainly if a student athlete, his, his or her friends wants to get together and do that on their own, that's not going to be under the supervision of our coaches. We're not going to have our coaches circumventing C D C guidelines, what have you. I will tell you, I did talk to, uh, Justin Harrison at F H S A this morning as well. Uh, in that conversation, I learned that that's much in line with what the district across the state of Florida, with the exception of one are doing currently right now. And I'm also on a, um, Zoom with the other county athletic directors across the state tomorrow at one o'clock. And I did submit questions relative to how are they managing the, uh, summer work, uh, summer workouts and conditions. So I'll get some more information.
I think that was very prudent. So thank you for doing that. And I know that hurt. I know you are a father, a former coach, athletic director. That was not, that, that, that personally hits you when, when you have to make a call like that.
Absolutely. But these are unprecedented times. Absolutely, but these are our present times, we're gonna do what we can to protect our kids.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And then the last thing I had was that, um, National Peace Officers Memorial Day is May fifteenth, and, uh, so that's always the day you remember our law enforcement officers.
I think y'all handled all my questions, thank you, I'm good to go.
Well, I'm just still missing all the meetings and seeing you, so I'm glad to be here today with all of you face-to-face instead of Zooming, um, but, um, I'm, I'm getting used to Zooming.
You did great! You did great!
Well, I do have to explain that I have an old Dell laptop that doesn't have a camera in it, so they only see my name, and I'm not buying a new one to Zoom.
No, I was just gonna say, Ms. Kathy may have one sitting around if she's hearing, if she can hear us, she may be able to hook you up.
This one works fine.
Yeah, but it's, um, it's good, I, I think, um, we need to plan probably to, to continue, I know we can, for last week's, or last month's workshop and meeting, but I think with everything that's going on right now, I think we should plan, um, Mr. Mullin, do you agree, plan for a fourth, fourth Tuesday meeting?
In June?
And possible workshop in, in, no, in May?
Oh, in May?
Usually we don't do it because of graduations, but everything's, I don't know, we've got so much coming down the pipe right now, you may wanna see us again.
I don't know that it's necessary, since the next week will be the June meeting, but that's up to the board.
You, I, I was gonna say, I think if, if the superintendent and, and you all decide that, I'd be flexible whatever you decide.
Yeah, because even when I, when you say we're not, we're still doing the ceremonies, uh, there's gonna still be a ceremony at all five of the schools.
Yeah.
So there's still gonna be.
We're gonna be busy.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard pressed to squeeze that in, but if an emergency comes up, I would think the superintendent would be able to call an emergency board meeting.
Okay.
As opposed to schedule a workshop.